Hey, everybody. Hope everyone enjoyed the National Night Out festivities. Welcome back. We'll commence the Joint Meeting for the Rules and Open Government Committee for the Whole for August 6th. We have everyone here in the committee, so we have a quorum. We'll start with a review of the final agenda for August 13th. And these proposed ads, is that for the 13th?
Yes.
It says August 7th, I just want to make sure.
Yes, that should be for the 13th.
Okay, that's for the 13th. So there are two ads there. And then, so start with a review on pages four and five. Are there any changes? Okay, any changes to six and seven?
I need a sunshine waiver for the memo on 2.9.
2.9 sunshine.
And points and commissions appointments.
Okay. Pages eight and nine. Any changes on 10 or 11? And pages 12, 13? Pages 14 and 15? Pages 16 and 17, there are requests from advocates on item 4.4, the housing payment and quality ordinance for a time certain. Proposed something like not before 3:00? Because it seems to be a fairly short agenda.
Yeah, I think we already have the auditor reports not before 3:00.
Oh, right, okay.
I'm not sure if that makes a difference. I'm not sure we'll have enough agenda to get to 3:00 if we move everything to after 3:00.
Yeah, good point. All right, not before, oh, boy.
To be heard last?
Yeah, I think we're still a bit concerned about not having enough. I'd hate to have the council sitting around for 45 minutes waiting for stuff.
Especially because some things got dropped and deferred.
Yeah, a lot got dropped and deferred. So I think, given what we got with the IPA, I think this is going to get called pretty Sets it somewhere in the 2:00 time.
Maybe not before 2:30?
Yeah, I'd only want to do that if we're going to push back the IPA report, because I would imagine this item took quite a bit more than a half hour. Why don't we, why don't we listen to public comments? And then we'll decide how to proceed from there. Pages 18 and 19? Okay, we'll come back to this in a moment. Tessa Woodman-C, followed by Andrew Boone.
What was the topic on?
This is the agenda of August 13th.
The agenda item? Well, what I was upset about was the last time I was here for your Rules Committee, and you did not call the cards as I had submitted them. And I even called the city clerk's office and complained about it. And of course, she ignored me. She's supposed to get back to me, the city clerk, Tony, and supposed to get back to me, she didn't do that, about the cards that I had submitted and that you didn't call me. And so, we're finding an attack on citizenry from the community, because you want to shut us down. And that is the same thing that happened with me complaining about the seven-story white wall that was going up at Whole Foods, and then you sell it to the lowest bidder, the corporations. And we're very angry, and we're thinking about a lawsuit against you, which would be along the lines of other people who have been suing the city because of your malfeasance. And when we complain about a seven-story architectural decline because you don't have a good architectural review board, and then you sell it to the corporations for them to put a logo up, that is wrong. And that's what you did. That's the kind of horrors and prostitutes that you guys are about everything.
Thank you. Mr. Boone?
Yeah, laugh, I know, right. Mine is a deny.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the City Council Mayor Licardo. I agree that in a lot of ways, public input is lost. But I am glad that we have a review of upcoming City Council agendas, for example. So just in the short time that I have, I'd like to express my support for the Sonic Runway being installed as a permanent or as long as it can be maintained installation here at City Hall. I agree with the description in this report about it creating a community space. People wanted to come to a place that's normally very empty, and it's just empty concrete. And I come here with bike rides. We try to create our community, but this was just hundreds of people every day, and it really showed, you know, a modern, high-tech look of the city. And I'm very glad that you're investing a small amount of money in what I would call this thing you've been, or many leaders, community leaders have been expressing support for like a monument, a placemaking monument of the city. And that's certainly a very good example, and building something in the arena green park isn't, because it's a green natural space. So the difference, that's the difference there that I think is important. On the August 20th Council meeting regarding the Caltrain long-range service vision, yes, it is certainly preferable that very ambitious vision for Caltrain be adopted as the city's official policy. I agree with this. But just consider all of the things that have to fall into place. It's almost like a perfect scenario. It's very positive. High-speed rail has to be built to San Francisco, for example, for the investments to take place that this level of service, tripling the ridership, would require. So I'm saying it's a low probability, given the course that we're on right now, and the city of San Jose should support it strongly, and also express similar kind of support for VTA and VTA's bus and light rail services. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just make a recommendation, maybe on item 4.4. Maybe to clearly signal to advocates when they ought to be showing up, given the relatively brief agenda that we have, simply to say not before 2:00 for 4.4. I think we do expect it would be called fairly quickly. And then that will enable us to have enough time to get things done for the IPA report. Yes, Councilmember Davis?
What's the reason that 2.3, the privacy policy update, got deferred to September? We've been waiting for that for quite some time.
I was told there was a desire for some outreach with individual council members. Is that what you'd heard?
Yeah, I think it is around outreach and kind of a little bit of regrouping.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, are there?
Motion to approve the August 13th agenda with a sunshine waiver on 2.9, a not before 2:00 PM for item 4.4, and the sunshine waiver on the ad sheet for, yeah, for those two items.
Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes. Onto the draft agenda for August 20th. Are there any changes beginning with pages four and five?
We have updated language coming for 2.7. It's just boards and commission lists.
Okay. Thank you. Pages six and seven. Pages eight and nine, I suspect we're going to spend a lot of time talking about trains.
A lot of time.
And trains and airports. Okay. Are there any suggested changes so far? I don't have any cards on this particular item. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes. We have a release date on item D.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public record, item E.
Motion to note and file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. We're on to item G. Tessie, you'd like to speak on the consent items?
I guess I'm starting with the dumpster day. I have a problem with your dumpster days, in that we are, we should be doing what Santa Clara does and putting the stuff out so that people can go through it, and that your whole campaign, "Kick it to the curb," you know, "Get rid of it," like it goes somewhere. That's really bad education. You're failing on that level, too. You're failing as a leadership in our community, because you're kicking it to the curb, like as if there's a curb, as if there's a place that it can go, that it's a good place for it to go. No, there is no good place for it to go. It should be reused. It shouldn't have been bought in the first place, most probably. And then for your lack of education to say, "Kick it to the curb, throw it away," you know, "It's fine, throw it to the dump." That's stupid, okay? And you need to figure that out, that we need to recycle, reuse, reduce.
Okay, thank you. And you also want to speak on the flea market item, I believe? Yeah. I'm sorry, not flea market, flea?
Oh, yeah. I was saying, all of your programs, all of these taxes, I mean, these supported programs, one for one, you even ask corporations to support them. That has a conflict of interest. You're always asking for support from corporations, the individual businesses and community groups to support. But what we're not doing is making these events as green as we can. You are not making these events that there's no cars, that there's no airplanes, well, fine, no airplanes, fine, but no cars. There should be no cars in any of these events. You know, it should be all bicycle, it should be all pedestrian, it should be all mass transit. That's how these things should go. So when we have these beautification days sponsored, I guess you're doing beautification days. I mean, or here is one, was the Garden at the Flea sponsored, retroactive, the Garden at the Flea. So these are sponsored special events. These events should be educational, and therefore, we should learn how to live without fossil fuels. That should be your education. Everything is about climate emergency, everything that you do. I know you hate me for saying this and wish I'd get my two minutes done and get off the mic, but that's what we need to start talking about, is climate emergency, and you're not doing it. And you need to start thinking about that. Everything needs to be about climate emergency. And so when we do these flea-sponsored things, they should be without a car. That's how we have to live. We have to learn to live without fossil fuels. And that's your job, is to educate us to do that, to be leaders, and to reduce our harms. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about harm. Harm is coming. 23 feet of sea level rise is coming, because green land is melting. I don't know if you got the message. And he's, you're denialist. And if you're not denialist, you're delayers, okay? And we're protesting at City Hall if you declare a climate emergency. And so that everything has that as its highest priority. That is what we work on as our highest priority for all agenda items. We look at it, how we're bringing that curve down.
Thank you, Ms. Woodman-C. Is there a motion on this consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're on to G2, which is the monthly report of our city auditor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This will be the last update on the fiscal year 1819 work plan. In June, we issued the audit of employee reimbursements that will be coming to you, to the full council, later in August. Next up, we'll be issuing the audit of Form 700 compliance, which we go into PIS-FIS next week, and procurement card expenditures, which is in September. So with that, I'd ask that, oh, one other thing. In July, Max Smith joined our office for the summer as part of the Stanford and Government Fellowship Program. We get Stanford interns every summer, and they jump in and do tremendous job, and Max is fully on board with us this year. So I wanted to introduce Max to you. With that, ask that you approve the monthly report for June and July, and that's it.
Thank you, Joe, and welcome, Max. All right, any questions about the report that's here in our?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Just a question, Joe, as we're?
Yes.
Think about assignments in process. You would be coming up with your work plan for next year when?
Next item.
The very next, of course, thank you. Then I should be looking at that item, shouldn't I? Excellent. Joe, you're nothing if not timely. Okay, on the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item three, here we go.
Okay, so as part of our annual review of potential audit subjects, we solicit audit suggestions from City Council, members of the public, and city staff. We also use information from the city's adopted operating capital budgets and financial statements to assess risks and help us to identify and prioritize audit subjects. The results of that risk assessment are attached to the proposed work plan, Attachment A. So the list of our proposed audit assignments for fiscal year 1920 include a mix of audits already in process, recurring audits, and additional projects that address a wide range of concerns. So for each audit listed, there is a tentative objective that may be refined during the scoping phase of the audit. So our audits in process, I've touched on a couple of these already, Form 700 filings should be going to PIS-FIS next week, and procurement card expenditures will be going to PIS-FIS in September. In lieu fees related to traffic improvements and undergrounding activities is slated for TNE in October, and tech deployment for the smart cities later in the year. We have a series of annual and recurring projects, including our semi-annual recommendation follow-up status reports, and these generally come out in September and March. Our annual performance review for Team San Jose and the Convention of Visor Bureau, and our annual services report, which we release generally in December of every year. We also oversee independent, the independent certified public accounting firm, Masius, Genie, and Connell, who will conduct various financial audits as described on page two of the work plan, items eight through 10. We also have a Housing Department grant program, which is a carryover project, but new projects include park maintenance, the onsite fire code inspections during the construction phase of development projects, development fee work and process reserves, fleet maintenance, the assessment of current practices for take-home vehicles across the city, the timeliness of code enforcement responses for select programs, real estate services, sidewalk repair program, muni water billing and customer service, and animal services. In total, we have 21 projects on the work plan, which is in line or consistent with last year's work plan. And then on page three and four, we have a whole host of projects that we considered but didn't recommend this time, about 36 projects. There's probably longer list than that, but these are things that we looked at, but for different reasons, resource constraints, or just to spread the audit work around the city, that we're not recommending those at this time. So during the year, as audit work proceeds, I'll keep you apprised of the status and progress toward completing audit projects in my monthly reports. And with that, I ask that you approve the work plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Joe. A few questions.
Questions from colleagues?
No? Okay. First, really happy that you're looking at fire safety code inspections. With regard to the development fee work and process reserves? As I understand it, I could be wrong on this, but that's a different reserve than the standard development fees. Would this, let me just ask the question, would this cover the entire reserve that we have in development services, or just a portion of it?
That's to be determined. So this is something the administration asks us to look at, because there's some reserves built up, and just wants us to look at just the tracking of fees over time and how they're kind of assigned to projects.
Okay.
And I see Davis.
Yeah, in theory, the work in progress is a subset of the overall reserves, but the trick is kind of getting to what is the work in progress?
Right.
Yeah.
Component of that.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
And then, gosh, it seems like we've had a lot of audits on fleets, but maybe that's ancient history.
The last audit, I believe, was like 2003.
Really?
Yeah. And last year, actually, at this meeting, Councilmember Camus asked for it.
Okay, all right.
So I wanted to respond to that.
Okay, understood. Great. And then on the sidewalk repair program, is it possible that in addition to the operations, that the audit might consider what and how we better address issues of residents and very limited incomes to deal with sidewalk repair?
Yeah, we can add that into the preliminary kind of scope and just, and take a look at it.
Yeah. Just be helpful to know, I know we have a very limited pot of funds, and I'd just like to understand what percent of the universe of needy residents does that really address, and how we're doing with it. Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, I do.
Yes, Councilmember Davis?
I have a question on the Housing Department grant programs, and what's the status on that? I don't think I heard.
That's a great question, thank you. So that one is actually on hold. We issued a homeless services audit in November of 2018, which had a number of recommendations about grant monitoring. And so we kind of put it on hold until we kind of see how those kind of shake out and what the, and how they implement those, and then we'll revisit it at a later date. So we just have been holding that, holding that, because we've kind of covered some of that ground, but we'll come back to it at some point in the future.
Do you anticipate next year?
It's kind of depend on how the implementation goes. It's kind of a wait-and-see.
All right, thank you.
Joe, is that last item, the fleet maintenance audit that you are doing, number 15, I know you're focused on maintenance, and I know this may not be possible for all city vehicles, but would it be possible to include some evaluation of whether, to what extent, electric vehicle procurement could substantially reduce maintenance costs and activity?
I'll add that to a question.
Okay, thank you.
There, I'm sorry, one more question.
Yeah, sure, Councilmember Davis?
So my last question is about, so you explained a little bit about why some of the, some of the suggestions that you received didn't quite make it to the list, and I believe you had like eight factors to consider in order for something to get on the list. If something changed in the community, say there was some issue that just rose to the top and is, you know, on fire, I guess, would we have an opportunity to make some changes and add to that list?
Yes, so during the year, this committee can add projects to the work plan. I can add things, I can bring additional projects to you to add to the work plan. I did that in June with the tech deployment, because I had a team freeing up, and it was something of interest. So during the year, when something comes up, we can, it can be added to the work plan by this committee.
Great, thank you.
We strongly urge that there be items that would be taken off or pushed down.
Yeah, generally, things get added to the work plan.
Yes, yeah. Trying to preserve the mental health of all our auditors.
Delete, delete.
Okay. There is a motion, is that right?
Motion, hold, second.
Okay, there's now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thanks, Joe. Onto item H1, Community and Economic Development Committee work plan.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Boone, this looks like you're writing. Did you submit something here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Licardo, and members of the Rules and Open Government Committee. My name is Andrew Boone. I am a candidate for San Jose City Council, District 6, and wanted to comment briefly on the Community and Economic Development work plan regarding the item which will review land use and other regulations for cannabis businesses. I know it is there, scheduled for February 24, 2020, as a review of regulations we have. And so my overall concern about this is, first of all, that's pretty far out in the future for something that should be quite a high priority, given that we're talking about significant amount of revenue that the city can generate from this type of business. This is something you've all stated, and in January, I think it was, when the council was discussing this item, a majority of you expressed interest in more retail dispensaries opening, and that's something very important in the policy. We have 16, and simply allowing those 16 to open a second location, that's one type of expansion of this business. Another type of expansion is to issue more permits to more businesses, and that's something that the equity policy relies on, new business owners coming in and owning such businesses. And so my concern is, we haven't set a goal or even had a discussion about how many such businesses is our target. And if we wait a year from now to get a report on some opinions about what it should be, we might lose the opportunity to make the right choice. And what's the right choice? We should have a report that considers options that are even way different than what we're doing right now, which in my opinion is a too much, way too much of a restriction of an industry, that it's better for it to be sold legally, this product cannabis, than it is to be sold legally, on top of the fact that the city earns valuable tax revenue from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Economic development, that's something we have to stop thinking about, okay? Remember, we're in a climate emergency. I don't know if you got the email or the message, but we are. And it's coming. You know, nature has already kicked in. We are, the Arctic is burning. Did you get that memo? Green land is melting. Do you get that memo? Okay, it's serious. We've got to change the way we're doing things. And the way that economic, we cannot be thinking about economics anymore, or, or about politics, or about religion. We have to focus on biology, physics, and engineering. And economics, you know, with the economic development, I guess it all, the thing that I'm most upset about is the way Deb Davis's office has handled the building at, on the Madera, and that she sold, that you all sold the Madera to the corporations, okay? To the corporations, to put a logo on it about the sharks, that it's shark's territory with blood. My girlfriend said, one of our neighbors said, "It's the ugliest thing she's ever seen." The only thing that could make it worse is if it was blood all over it. But there is blood all over it. It's the sharks, and it's all over it. And I don't know if you heard about the sharks killing people in Florida. That's because we have a climate emergency, and they can't survive. And that's what we asked to put on that building. And you ignored the community at your peril. You ignored it, to sell it to the corporations. You sold that wall to the corporations, and that was wrong. When I brought that to you, to make, that we said it was soul-destroying, the way that the building was built, and it should have been brought back to planning, because it was improperly done. And you sold it to the SAP, to the Madera, and to Whole Foods for the sharks. That we're shark territory. That's not who we are as a city. We need to be fighting climate emergency. That's what we need to be doing.
Thank you. There was a motion, is that right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? H3 is the agenda for the Transportation and Environment Committee.
Motion, hold, second.
Thank you again, Mayor Licardo, and City Council members, senior staff. My name is Andrew Boone. I am a candidate for San Jose City Council, myself, District 6. And regarding the Transportation and Environment work plan, I am glad to see that the Climate Smart Plan is reviewed there twice a year, that that's ongoing, and so that's showing that it's an important plan to the city. And I hope that our review is detailed. I mean, we do need to know that year after year, we're making a few percentage points progress in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. If we're steady at the same level, even for a few years, we're way, then we're way, way behind on having any hope of addressing this crisis. We have to be chopping away our emissions at a rate of about 5% per year until there aren't any anymore. That's not, that's not something you just pass by decree or tweak current programs a little bit. It's a total reorganization of our priorities and our programs. So starting with the Bike Plan 2020 and micro-mobility plans, being on that work plan is a good start, that bicycling and riding scooters is prioritized as their own items. But other things that should be included is a, what is the city's vision for transit service? And I think this is dropped from, it's not an item anywhere in that work plan, I think because we say, "Oh, that's the jurisdiction of the VTA." Yes, of course, because they decide how much to fund, what transit service we have. Yes, of course, because they decide how much to fund, what transit service we have. But of course, the city of San Jose has more than half the population and has a huge, powerful voice on the VTA board. And what I think is missing is a stronger, you know, a visionary plan for bus and light rail service for the city, for the residents of the city. Like the Caltrain Business Plan that's being approved now, we also, as a city, should have a plan for what is the best that we can put in place for our residents in terms of public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rehmmer?
Mayor Liccardo Committee, I'm here as a member...
Mr. Rehmmer, could you pull up the, if you squeeze the handle just beneath the mic, that'll keep, yeah, squeeze it and then pull it up. Now, yeah, as you squeeze it, then you can pull it up to you. There you go. Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Liccardo Committee members, I'm here as a member of the Vision Zero Coalition in San Jose. I wanted to remind this committee that in May, when the Transportation and Environment Committee heard the annual Vision Zero report, the committee voted unanimously to direct staff to come back quarterly with shorter updates on Vision Zero in progress, and the idea behind that being that if we do an annual report, death becomes a statistic. More frequent and more recent reporting allows us to focus more on individual deaths and analyze what went wrong and maybe take corrective action. It's unfortunate that this work plan, I assume its oversight does not include those quarterly updates, and I want to urge this committee to honor the unanimous vote of the committee, the Transportation Committee, to include those updates in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rehmmer. I'm sorry, Mr. Cordes, followed by Ms. Sinha?
My name's John Cordes, speaking on behalf of the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition is a member of the Silicon Valley, excuse me, San Jose Vision Zero Coalition. We envision a community that values and includes and encourages bicycling for all purposes, for all people, and a key component of achieving that vision is making our streets safe for all users. I'm here today to speak on the lack of the quarterly updates for the San Jose Vision Zero Plan as requested by the Transportation and Environment Committee. We were thrilled when they passed unanimously that request back in May. Unfortunately, the annual plan does not include those requests. Please vote to send this annual plan back to staff to implement the quarterly Vision Zero updates the committee and the public think are necessary to encourage more actions to make our streets safer. We acknowledge that San Jose is making efforts to make our streets safer. San Jose was an early adopter of Vision Zero and is now working on its second two-year work plan. Making our streets safer requires multiple actions. Publicly acknowledging, acknowledging that people are dying on our streets is one way to change our culture. For example, we want to thank Councilmember Davis and Mayor Liccardo for attending the Ride for Silence last week and publicly acknowledging the most recent deaths. Public acknowledgement is a critical step for creating groundswell for action. SVBC looks forward to providing inputs to the San Jose Department of Transportation and creating a new two-year action plan. We think quarterly reporting to the public and T and E Committee, including the most recent deaths, should be acknowledged in that plan. Acknowledging our failures to keep our people safe is an important component for making safety improvements. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nikita Sinha. I'm with California WACS as the WACS San Jose Program Manager, also a longtime resident of District One. I wanted to reiterate what Robin and John both said, that we request this committee to send their work plan back and incorporate the quarterly reporting of Vision Zero. Since the May T and E meeting, when that was unanimously approved by the committee, there have been 12 more fatalities in San Jose. Quarterly reporting will give us the opportunity to acknowledge each of these and not just let them become a statistic, as well as dedicate a significant amount of our time and our energy into preventing these in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Solomon?
Hello, mayor and councilpersons. Thank you for your service. Bicycling is getting safer. I'm here to speak a little bit, so I can look at my notes. I'm speaking as a community member and longtime resident of District Six and District Three Culture Vulture. You see me a lot of everything, and I'm also not here as a representative of the city of San Jose's BPAC, and I'm honored to be a member of that. I'm not here as a member of, longtime volunteer at San Jose Bike Party and member of the Hominum Cycling Touring Club. Again, I'm just a member, just a community member who bikes a lot. Please, I urge you to, as the folks have said before me, quarterly reporting, we need to know what's going on so we can improve it. The two-year plan, if you take a look at it, of Vision Zero, it's on the web. It's very general. There aren't measurable goals, and the timeline just says ongoing. So is there something more specific somewhere else? I do the math of the annual report and the not, you know, not specific things, and I don't want to say Vision Zero's for show, but we're seeing the traffic deaths aren't improving. We have more than San Francisco. People are surprised at that. So anyway, if there's any way you can do whatever you can do, so we have, so it comes to council every quarter, so we're seeing this, and that when the public know about the fatalities and the problems, we can do what we can to make it better, just so people can know about it. And I thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Davis, and old Mayor Liccardo for coming to the memorial this past weekend for Mr. Levin, and it makes a difference, so anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Ms. Woodmansey?
Well, it's been very difficult to see no response really from our city in regards to traffic safety. I have, my husband got hit by a car in our neighborhood. I called the city about it. They say, oh, it's going to cost $500,000. Oh, I have to have a bake sale to get that to be fixed, that there be a left-hand turn signal that separates the traffic at Stockton and Taylor Street. Okay, it's a mess, and nobody has fixed it, you know? And it doesn't, you know, that's the way all, I was riding over, my husband used to work at Cisco. It's a mess over there. There's all, everybody comes in on that left-hand turn, and there's no separation, there's no left-hand signal, and it just is a mess over there. And then I ride my bicycle up to Valley Fair, and they fixed it, but they didn't give us a lane under the, under the underpass as we go up to Monroe, as we're riding on Forest. And we are supposed to share the road. It's a shallow, but you can't even see the shadows. You don't even see it until you're at the top, and it's not even in green. There, oh, we, oh, green is very expensive. Oh, we're counting our pennies. Yeah, you're, there you have your calculator, I'm sure, Johnny Camus. The pennies about, you know, how much it's going to cost to put that green on our, on our roads. You don't do that because it costs too much money. And they didn't, they gave us a shallow there to share the road, even though you can't even tell. It's at the, it's, there's the top of the hill as you're going up on Forest. We needed our own lane so it's safe, but no, we can't get that. So the DOT says it has to keep traffic flowing. You're making the wrong priorities, over and over. You've been making the wrong priorities about our safety. That's what's supposed to be a job, is to protect us from harm.
Thank you, Ms. Woodmansey. All right, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I want to thank members of the public for the reminder about the Vision Zero quarterly update. I would guess that it is going to be in the transportation planning update, but I just want to amend my motion to make sure that the Vision Zero quarterly update is included, and if we can include it as a separate line.
Yeah, that'll be fine. And I'll just note that, you know, the first part of this work plan, we're approving. The second part is actually a draft for the second six months, and so there's plenty of opportunity to revise the second six-month period to incorporate that as well, so we'll do both.
Great, but let's make sure we have something this fall in...
Yeah, we have something currently scheduled for November. The question is if we're going to bring something separate, a second update between now and December.
Okay.
And then certainly for the second period, we can incorporate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Onto item six, Smart Cities and Service Improvement Committee. Ms. Woodmansey? And thanks for, to the members of the committee who came out. Ms. Woodmansey, item six, Smart Cities and Service Improvements Committee. Yes?
Oh, okay, good. And service improvement, the smart cities. And smart city. Well, climate smart, I guess that, is that what that means, climate smart, smart cities? And Service Improvement Committee Work Plan, or smart cities, I guess, whatever. Well, let's just talk about the most important thing in the room, the elephant in the room, climate smart. Yeah, we need to be climate smart, and we're not climate smart. And so when we were talking about how...
Ma'am, it's not actually about climate smart.
Is this, what is it, smart cities?
Yeah, it's not...
And service improvements. What would you call smart cities?
That would be under Transportation and Environment Committee.
What does smart city mean?
A smart city would relate to technology and data.
Oh, technology and Service Improvement Committee Work Plan.
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay, we'll talk about smart city in terms of, let's talk about the way our city deals with problems. And one of the things that the city of San Francisco has done a really good job, and the reason why the city of San Francisco is doing a good job was the mayor at the time, was Governor Newsom. And so Governor Newsom, Gavin Newsom, had implemented what the city of New York had done. And what it is, is they've got a great plan of how they deal with complaints, about how complaints get filed in our city. Our city, it goes into a garbage can, nobody does anything, okay? So the way that it's got fixed in San Francisco and New York is they have a documentation of every time you call about a problem, it's documented, you get a file number. And I know you're trying to work on that with your website that you can go to, but the way it works in the city of San Francisco, as well as the city of New York, is that you do get a case number for everything that you complain about, and there is some accountability, and you're not doing that. When you, when you complain about things here, about our safety of our streets, it goes into a wastebasket. That's how it's done. So you need to improve it like San Francisco and New York, accountability.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to open forum. Mr. Boone?
Thank you, Mayor Liccardo and City Council members, for the many opportunities we do have, at least on Wednesday afternoon, to comment on the city's policies and the city council's decisions. My name is Andrew Boone. I am a candidate for San Jose City Council, District Six, and I saw news on San Jose Spotlight that there is a fourth candidate for the seat. His name is Marshall Woodmansey, age 18. And I just want to say that I know Marshall personally, and I'm glad that we have such a diversity of strong opinions for what I think is, what we need to do for the future. So you are not just managing the city of San Jose for the next five years, it's for 100 years, it's for 500 years. And so we have to be ready for what is our life going to be like in 50 years. So I just want to point out, a candidate who grew up here and wants to, is very, very invested in making San Jose and the South Bay successful, and he said, is quoted in the Spotlight, "Something we're going to have to accept as a species, we're going to have to accept as Americans," is that every issue is going to be worsened or negated by climate change. So all of the other priorities, budgets, finding places for people to live, where do we get our food, it's all about to collapse because of catastrophic climate change, given the path that we are currently on. And that is why it is important for this major city, this very large city in America, to declare a climate emergency. Over 800 cities around the world, many in North America, hundreds have done this. And the reason to do so is to say, now this is at the utmost of our highest priorities. It is such a priority that it's an emergency to slash our greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible, not just because of the contribution we make to climate change, but because we inspire many other cities globally. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Woodmansey?
I guess everybody's not really paying it much attention, but that's the way it goes with the council. That's why Greta Thunberg says, "Our politicians have failed us," okay? That's why we are in the jaws of destruction, is that our politicians have failed us. All of you are our politicians, okay? What my son said that he was thinking about when he was going to run, is that, he is running, but his campaign was IPCC, or don't vote for me. That's the intergovernmental panel on climate change that says that we have to reduce 50% in the next 10 years or experience catastrophic irreversible climate change. And so what we have to do, what that means, what that looks like, okay, from an economic point of view, is that's no driving. We're talking about 50% reduction in fossil fuel emissions. That's no driving, no flying, no movement of goods, okay? That means there's nothing on the shelves at Safeway and Whole Foods, okay? That's no movement of goods, no diesel trucks bringing in all of our crap, okay? That means no jobs. Doesn't mean there's no work, okay? Because I know you're all looking at your phones, you got, you're going to find your next job, fine, you know, ignoring me, we know that. And then on top of it is, the last thing is no money. But there will, there'll be a lot of work to do. And so getting back to the, one of the main issues that brought us here today, is your ignoring of us when we brought up a big planning issue in the city of San Jose on the building on Madera, in our garden Alameda, with the white 10-foot walls, and we said we didn't like it, it was soul-destroying. And then you sold it to the corporations, okay? You sold it to advertising. That's why my husband calls politicians whores and prostitutes and pimps. You sold it. You sold our building to the, to the, to the Madera and to Whole Foods and to SAP to advertise about the sharks, that that's the most important thing. And that's where you've been doing everything wrong, and you need, and that's why we're going to do a lawsuit against you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Woodmansey. Any adjournments?